Chair.
Okay, good. Like the following order, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Chairman Gerald Gray.
Here.
Member Rick Carey.
Here.
Member David Hutchins.
Here.
Member Penny Konsinski.
Here.
Member Chair Mark Marsh.
Here.
So I'll stand for the flag of allegiance. The flag of allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of amendments is the approval of our minutes from the April 8 meeting. Any questions, comments regarding the minutes? No questions or comments?
We move to approve the minutes from the eighteenth.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain because I wasn't there in Kansas.
Chairman Gray, for the record, we're going to add a number nine to your agenda for code amendments regarding coconut removal.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we get into the agenda business, could we have or introduce just a general comment, commission comment, before we start?
Absolutely.
Our meetings, just so that anything that's observed or... I have two items. But first, I want to thank this board, this commission, and past, present and past members for stewardship towards getting this, I guess it's Development Review Committee?
Yes, it is the Development, well, it's the Development Plan Review. I mean, it's still the P&amp;C Board, but it's just a Development Plan Review process.
Yeah, and staff and the commission, because it's been a year and a half. And I think we've finally come to where we need to be to serve and protect this town. So with that said, the other thing I noticed over the weekend was a introduction of AstroTurf into our town. And I'd like to ask maybe Tracy or Wayne, what other criteria, was that a permit allowed? Or was there any review of that?
Wayne, are you aware?
It's a load, and there's no permit process for it.
All right, I'm only concerned because other municipalities allow it, but not in the front yard. And I think the town, I guess, Marty, you can maybe help us with this. I think it's a dangerous precedent to allow to happen. So I don't know how the town and the commission are going to be able to address that. I think we better nip it.
Oh, that's a good point.
In the bud.
If there's consensus, you can direct staff to look into the issue for a code amendment.
Yes, and perhaps just to kind of give us a heads up. Maybe we asked Marty if he has any observations about that subject.
Yes, good morning. Marty Minor with Urban Design Kilay Studios for the record, and the town's planning consultant. Mr. Marsh is correct. There is several issues, not only aesthetically, but you're also dealing with the imperviousness of the ground and the drainage. And a lot of places tend to treat it just like hardscape, like a driveway or pavers. There's several things that you need to look at for that. Different varieties of AstroTurf. I've seen it used well, I've seen it used unwell. So those are just the offhand comments. But yeah, people are, towns are starting to regulate that on where they can and can't use it.
And are you saying that the trend is maybe in the backyard, but never in the front yard?
That for a single-family homes and, you know, any kind of residential, yes, that's what we're seeing.
Okay.
You're seeing it more in a specialized area. I've seen it around fountains, because the wind will blow the water and cause the grass to die.
Sure.
Those kind of things.
And from the standpoint of pervious and impervious, say again, is it considered impervious? And is it therefore in violation of our pervious requirements?
It could be.
Okay, got it. Okay, good, thank you.
May I ask what the observation was, how it's used? Is it the large sheets like it's an entire lawn? Or is it four-inch strips between pavers?
No, it's laid like carpet, and it's large sections. It's right up the half of the road from your place. Across the road. But I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear what the other members say.
I just noticed it yesterday for the first time. And it definitely looks like AstroTurf. I question what else could be put in there. It's vegetation, because it's on a slope, right?
Yeah, but grass can grow, of course, it has slopes. I mean, it's not...
Yeah, yeah, but...
Nothing to impede, natural grass.
There's no telling what's underneath that, whether it's concrete or... I mean, you could also put rock or something, I suppose.
Yeah, I just personally think it's a bad precedent. I mean, there is usage, as Marty mentioned, that's warranted. Not in the front yard, I think we're...
I mean, I was watching the kids roll their balls up and down yesterday. I'm thinking, oh, man, the kids will chase them out in the street.
Well, that's a whole other issue.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to have staff take a look at it and see what use might be appropriate and what use might not be.
Great.
Good, Rick, any comment?
I think it's a, I agree with Mark. I'm a bit concerned about precedent and also very much about the drainage potential problems with it.
So it sounds like we have a consensus that we would like to direct staff to take a look at it, at the subject, and get back to us at the next meeting. And even if you see a proposed ordinance that might be appropriate that you'd like to bring to us, that might be good, my point being, let's nip it in the bud. If it is a problem, we'll deal with it soon and later.
Chairman?
Yes?
We have several staff members that will be going on vacation, so it may not be at your next meeting, just so you're aware.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments, Mark, or?
No, I don't know if anybody else has any.
Okay, good. So then therefore, let's open the quasi-judicial portion of our meeting. And County Attorney, please check to see if there's any ex parte communication.
Does any members have any ex parte communication regarding items two and three on the agenda?
No.
Okay, seeing none?
None.
None, okay.
And Town Clerk, please swear to anybody who is going to make public comment regarding these items.
Right, anybody who wants to speak on items two or three, please stand and be sworn by the town clerk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'm supposed to do that, no, I can do that.
Yeah, good, okay, good. Staff report, please. Let's deal with, first of all, item number two, which is Concept Plan Review, 18 Harbor Drive South.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair and the board. What we have before us is an application submitted for 18 Harbor Drive South. Currently stands an existing single-family home, which should be slated for demolition, and in its place, a new two-story, three-bedroom, three-bath, two-car garage in its place, with a proposed elevation of 9.5 feet NAVD. There is no issues, no legal issues at the present time. And staff looked at the plans as submitted. We find we have no objections to the structure being proposed. The applicant is here to present to the board the project as proposed.
Thank you. Applicant, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Richard Jones with Richard Jones Architecture here in Delray Beach. I'm happy to be joined with Fritz Devitt, a local resident and business owner, who is going to be building this home at 18 Harbor Drive South. I believe there's a PowerPoint?
There's no PowerPoint, but if you want, I can scroll down to...
Thank you very much. And Mark, I appreciate your comments about the process. I believe we came through as one of the last houses under the old process. And we had like a little disconnect with the PowerPoint presentation. So we're here today now with the new process. And we'd like to be able to submit a PowerPoint presentation with our plans, that we can then accompany our presentation as we go through, if that's okay, moving forward.
Sure.
Thank you very much. So are all the slides, are all the drawings there?
All the drawings that you guys submitted to us via USB I/O.
Thank you very much. If we go to the site plan, please? And I did notice the simulated grass, by the way, on my drive in. And I wanted to pull the nine iron out of the back of my truck. And I agree with Marty, and I haven't seen Marty for many years, good to see you. Well, when we get to the site plan, you'll see that we're proposing a modest 3,100 square foot AC custom home. And I believe it's the next page, thank you very much. We have plenty of green space. We have the drainage accounted for, we have the septic accounted for, all outside of the green space. And I believe we're over on our green space requirement. And we have some great exposure to the canal. And we have a very good elevation of 9.5 NAVD. You may know that's the area of harbor that kind of grade goes down. So there's the transition from the house that's to the east and the house to the west. And I believe with this, with this concept, we've kind of created a nice streetscape and a nice transition between the two. The FAR, again, we're right at our FAR, with 3,100 AC, three bedrooms, great room plan, outdoor loggia, pool, plenty of parking for the bedrooms. We also have a cool little spa area off to the side of the master bath, and outdoor shower and so forth. And we may use some of the simulated grass, but it would be used appropriately in the backyard. But right now, it's all Zoysia, I believe, that we're going with, especially in the front. And if you take a look at the rendering, if you can go back just a couple. I think right from the first slide. What we're proposing is a transitional contemporary style. And we all know that contemporary and modern are very, very hot these days, and for the past five years or so. And we don't really see the trend leveling off. We see about 50% of our clients want contemporary and want modern. And of those, some like the flat roof and some like the pitched roof. So we have this style, this transitional contemporary style, where we're showing the pitched roof. It is a metal roof, complementary to some other metal roof houses recently built on the street. We have a lot of white stucco, we have some warm stone. And we have some simulated wood that we're showing on the garage doors and some of the body of the house itself. And the rear yard has a lot of movement similar to this, and a lot of open clear glass, undivided lights. And one thing we are proposing, which could be something a little new here in Ocean Ridge, is a green wall into the design of the front elevation. And you'll notice that at the base of the stair, there's like a green wall feature there. And the green wall, of course, very prominent on the new IPEC Theater in Delray Beach, it looks beautiful. And so imagine taking a little square, cutting a little square out of that wall, green wall, and applying it to the base of this stair, which would ordinarily be a blank wall. And so we think that combination of the stone and the wood and the white stucco and the green wall all come together very nicely in this elevation. And we think it's going to be enhance the streetscape, and we're very excited about it. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. If you're finished, let's open it up to public comment first, and then we'll come back if needed. Any members of the public have a comment?
Yes, sure. Terry Brown, Harbor Drive South. My wife and I live across the street. One of the concerns that we have, I know that they said that they accounted for drainage. I assume that meets the minimum code of one-inch requirement, right? Does it retain more than that?
It, I believe the civil engineer has accommodated the code required storm.
Yeah, which is one inch. But the problem, as he pointed out, was the slope in the road. All the water goes either into my neighbors or to us. Because I am the only driveway that meets code on that street, with the six-inch drop from the asphalt down to the swale. So the water's going to come. So I was just concerned about if there was any additional requirement because of the elevation. And we're at seven feet, he's at nine and a half feet. One of the neighbors is at 22 feet, and the other guy across the street, I think, is at 18. So you do have a lot, and last night, you could have seen it, it was like a river coming down that street. So I was just wondering if there was any requirement that they would retain more water. Obviously, they'd have to volunteer to do that beyond the code, but it's a concern that we have. The other thing is this green wall. I looked at the plans, I couldn't really determine what material was going to be used there. Artificial, real?
I know, it'll be natural, yes.
It'll be natural. So will it meet the requirement under the code for non-native?
If I can, Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown, if you can, direct your questions to the board. And then if the board wants to, we don't want to, I know, but I mean, we kind of need to...
Well, that was a concern, was it non-invasive planting? So that it wouldn't spread out of control, which we've had a problem on the dunes. People planting non-native invasive plants. The other question I had was what was going to happen to the wall that's on the neighbor's property, which indicates by the plan that it's right exactly on the line? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Any other members of the public comment? If not, do any members of the commission have any comments, observations, questions?
This would be my first question for the owner of the property, is this a spec home?
No, it's not.
You have an owner, this is for your own use, or?
I don't know, Bernie, I don't have friends who go to spec homes.
So you're going to live in this home?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Not that that changes how we review this, but it gives us a reference as to who the people coming into the community are. This is for Mr. Jones. I want to compliment you on the completeness of the application. The color elevation is very helpful, and your shaded elevations for us to have an understanding of what the project looks like. And also appreciate the good site plan with the drainage showing well on the site plan and where the septic is. These are elements that we look at, and it's nice to have them all here. In reference to Mr. Brown's question about the drainage, what the area, and staff knows this, that seems to kind of get left out in this process is that off-site portion between the property line and the street. And one of the solutions here, of course, would be, that's city property in the right-of-way, would be to have a deeper or better swale through that area, so that water is retained on the town property and that the grading is appropriate there.
And to add to that, that is correct. There's two things that's intended to be in place to address the drainage issue. One is the trench drains that'll be going across the circular driveway on both sides to help retain the water that's coming off the property, which are then connected to an exfiltration system. Secondly, would be the creation of swales at the end of that driveway and on the, where it meets the road. So a swale is actually there. We've found swales to be one of the best, one of the better solutions as far as allowing the water to percolate and not sheet flow straight down. So those are the two things that's going to be in place for this particular project.
And is that swale engineered and showing on the drawings?
It will be.
Because they seem to be kind of at the time of inspections and reworking, and the swales often are very minimal.
At this point, the civil engineer will be submitting that in the plan review portion of the presentation. They're only, because of this, we're a concept planner view, they're just going to indicate that that's going to be provided. And as such, so we can expect that. However, in the plan review processes, along with our own engineer, we're going to be looking at those various issues. But those are the criterias that's going to be required.
Thank you.
And if I may add...
Would you please, we announce you.
Oh, Richard Jones, thank you. Looking at the civil engineer's plan and the landscape architect's plan, which are preliminary, there appears to be, the vegetation stops at the property line. And, oh, thank you very much, by the way, for your comments. Terry, I appreciate it. From the property line to the edge of road right now is just shown as, there's really nothing happening there, as you could see. And so we could, from here, it would, and the rendering is probably not a good plan, not good to look at when it's probably the plan. There's much more area between the driveway and the edge of road that the civil engineer could design a swale in there to accommodate some of the water from the right-of-way. And it wouldn't impact the drainage on the property itself, nor encroach into the property line where the owner's landscape material will be. So if we go to, we can go back to the site plan, you could see it, I think Mark has already caught it there. There's a good 15 feet, I think, from the property line to the edge of road. And so there's plenty of area for a swale. If you just go a little further down, there you go. So you can see the heavy dashed line is the property line, right there. And then if you go further south, even further south of that, that's the edge of road. So that whole area there with that big dimension in the center that reads as 40 feet, six inches, that could all be swale. And your other question about the wall, do you mean the wall to the west? Okay, the wall to the west that's on the property line is an old wood-framed wall. I think they used PT, they must have used PT, with metal lath and stucco. And there's big holes broken out into it. Now, I give them credit because it's a beautiful wall. They did some nice cross bracing at the top out of two buys and painted it white. It's very nicely detailed, but it's crumbling. And so we'll remove that wall and we'll put a new wall in.
Thank you, Richard. Any other members of the commission?
Yeah, I'm just, sorry.
Mark, please.
Yeah, Rick, I have the same. I happen to know Mr. Devitt well, as the world turns, because I'm usually presenting to him in Galt Street. No, I think this is a nice addition to the neighborhood. And I think on Terry's concerns, I concur with Richard, that the civil engineer is a top civil engineer. So I'm sure he'll address.
You want to just say that way?
Yeah.
Once we get to see him, we'll change it.
The only comment, I mean, one minor concern, I see the style, and Richard, thanks for defining the style, because I missed that class. What is it, contemporary?
Modern.
It's considered a transitional contemporary. And it's for those closet modernists that don't want to really go for the flat roof all the way.
I hear, I'm only...
And so we'll give them a little pitch. And I believe, I believe you've probably seen this style quite a bit emerging. It's a clean and contemporary, and yet it still has a pitched roof and it's a metal roof. So it's kind of has its roots in a traditional massing.
Can I ask a question about the front of the house? Is it okay?
Yeah, I just, sorry. One concern I have on the style is that there is one, I think, three houses west of you. And we've just got to be conscious that this is kind of that similar-to-similar situation, where these are starting to pop up. And it's nothing against the style, it's just, you know, the number within the neighborhood or the streets. The only other thing I have is the landscaping, you have every species of palm on the project without one shade tree.
Okay.
And I think, you know, we're trying to encourage, especially in the front, some implementing some shade or, you know, trees, canopy trees. And good luck with the living wall. I did the one in Worth Avenue, and I can't tell you what it cost to maintain, so...
Oh, I'm sure. I can only imagine how much the eye cream is to maintain.
I think the architecture is good, it's clean, as you say, it's not cluttered, and I think it's good job, so...
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I like it, it's interesting. But, you know, I'm not an architect. And I'm curious about the slot windows. They kind of remind me of something you'd be looking out of if you were in a bunker. They don't emit much light. And I'm just curious about what the appeal is to people against having more light come into their home.
Well, you know, modernism has always been form follows function. And so in some cases, some of these longer horizontal windows have come out of, we like to have more light in the bathrooms.
Right.
Yet the showers and everything go up to about...
Great idea.
So the windows start at like seven feet and go to nine feet on the left-hand side there. And that's all in the master. And I believe that's in the master. There's the master shower there, that's all master. All those windows across the top are master. And the, I think of those as like the windows in the top of an old Volkswagen Bug, you know, going around the top.
Yeah.
And then we decided to carry that horizontal line straight across with the transom at the front door, and then a little play on the window, fixed window at the bottom of the stair at the green wall. So keep that horizontal. But modernism is, again, about tall and vertical and horizontal lines and unbroken panes of glass. So that's how we arrived at that.
Appreciate the explanation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll close this portion of the judicial hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll get a question, if you're heard.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to note for the record that it's not a motion for approval, it's a motion to recommend approval to the building and zoning department.
With no really comments on your, yeah, until the ordinance passes, we'll have to, you know, which may be another, one more reading.
No, that's so noted, the landscape comment.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, the landscape and soil.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, good. So therefore, let's step back, and maybe we can redo that portion, just to be clear.
Make a motion to move this to the town staff with comments about the landscape portion and the swale.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is the second Concept Plan Review, and that's 58 Spanish River Drive.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the board. The applicant, 58 Spanish River Drive, has submitted an application for review. It's an existing one-story...
Excuse me, Wayne, if I could just ask, have we covered any ex parte?
You did that initially on the first...
We don't have to do it again?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good. So everybody who wants to speak has been sworn in.
Well, I guess we can ask that question again, there may be new people. Anybody who's wanting to speak on item number three, which is the Concept Plan Review for, what is it?
58.
58 Spanish River Drive, can you, you know, if there's anybody new, stand and be sworn, if you weren't sworn already? Okay?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Good, thank you.
I'm a builder of the project, I'm not the designer, I'm here to answer any questions. I don't have anything to say about it, any comments?
Please, if you're gonna speak, please come up to the microphone.
No, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, staff report, please.
The applicant's address is, um, fifty-eight Spanish River Drive. The applicant, the application to be considered in front of you is an existing one-story single-family home, uh, with the proposed second-floor addition. This addition will create a larger home, uh, bringing it to a five-bedroom, five-bath home. Because of that requirement, they will be, they will need to have three garage spaces, uh, plus the two additional in the driveway. The application does meet the criteria, the pervious and impervious numbers, um, were also considered, and that also meets the criteria. Uh, the applicant is gonna be working on the improvement on the drain field as a consideration to, um, to enhance the property. The, I'm hoping that the applicant has this in PowerPoint. We are missing the second floor. I have reviewed it, but second-floor addition is not in some of the packages in front of you, so.
There it goes, yeah.
I wanna make a notation of that. However, it was reviewed, um, and I take it as my consideration. Uh, it is also referenced, however, it may not be available for display. Barring that, the applicant is here, uh, to make their presentation.
Applicant, please.
Yep, yeah, Joe.
You don't have the, uh, elevations or site plan? So, this is an existing-
Please, please state your name.
Uh, Joe Moser, B and M Building Company, I'm the general contractor of the project. And this is an existing home, um, on the water on, uh, Spanish River Drive. We're going to add a second-floor addition to it, to the home, um, and also update the, uh, the exist, the elevations. It's gonna be, it's similar to the, the home that, that the architect that was here before, uh, Richard Jones was showing. It's a, gonna be a contemporary-type home, clean lines, still a pitched roof, uh, uh, metal roof. Here's the plans now. A lot of the home stays as-is. Really, we're adding a master suite and an extra guest suite to the second floor. Fairly simple. Any questions, or?
Yes.
Eddie, you start over there.
I had a question for Wayne on the data calculations for the addition, the total impervious, impervious. I don't understand.
It's, it's incorrect. Uh, what, what happens on, on that sheet is the applicant will indicate what their numbers are, and they produce those numbers. We then audit those numbers and verify them in that column. For example, the impervious number is fifteen percent, and that's incorrect, the number is fifty-six percent. Yeah. So we've gone through and we've analyzed, there's, there's, there are numbers that the applicant would submit, and then we're verifying, uh, the accuracy of those. And that was an example of one that is inaccurate.
So their pervious at forty-four percent is accurate?
That one is accurate, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that part is accurate.
And we covered the second-floor floor plan?
We said, the second-floor plan, we, 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 we looked at the second-floor ratios, the seventy-five percent ratios, we looked at all the code requirements, um, that the applicant would be submitting, and that is within the confines of the code. So it will meet-
Just two bedrooms up there?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have that second, second-floor plan, uh, in house here that we can, we take a look at it?
If we did, they would have also gone in the plans, and everything in the USB is what Wayne and Tracy have.
Good. 'Cause that's an important piece of-
You're saying the second-
Yeah, the second-floor plan, do you have a floor plan with you?
Uh, no, I, I don't. Uh, they were in the package, there should be a, a sheet with the second floor.
Yeah, A three is missing.
It's missing.
But that's why, we just wanted to confirm that it was, that the building official has seen that it's just two bedrooms and-
Gotcha, all right.
Two baths up there.
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Uh, I had a question that, that is, shows up on the, uh, the survey, and it's showing the septic tank and drain field, approximate location is, uh, it looks like it's off, off the property itself, maybe it isn't, but it says, uh, location unknown. And, um, I'm, I'm wondering whether, uh, I'd like to know a little bit more about that, and whether the increase in square footage of the house, uh, will overload that septic element.
We ended up having to design a new, a, a performance-based system. Uh, it's all within the, it's within the site and it's on the footprint. It's at, it's at the Health Department now, I expect it'll be approved, um, in the next day or two, actually. The, the tanks that are there now have been located, and they should be noted on the survey. They probably couldn't get the exact shape of the footprint of the field itself, and they might call that unknown, uh, 'cause it's all buried, and it's, there's no lid for the field itself, so it's, sometimes they note that as, you know, exact boundary's unknown.
Okay, I have more questions, but I'm gonna let it slide down that way and see if somebody brighter than me can, will ask them.
Okay, again, I guess, I'm kind of looking at the style. Can you put the elevation up? Front elevation?
It was above, it was above, it was above.
Can you have your roller?
Not there.
I really don't know what that parapet element is trying to do, um, is trying to, I, and this may be on pure view, I, I apologize, but-
That's okay.
It's a concern. It seems like everything is now interrupted with these parapets, which may or may not help. I just, uh, it's kind of an unusual element to, to appear all of a sudden. I have a more fundamental, isn't it less expensive to knock this down and to do all this surgery to the house? Have you looked at that?
We did.
Kind of just to make your-
It, it's not, because the, it, it may not look it from the plans, but the, about half of the house to the east side doesn't change, it stays in, in place. The, the interior walls might move a little bit, but a lot of that stays.
As a pile structure, just, just a, uh, question. Let's talk about the fenestration, which are the windows and doors. You have, you'll see your front doors five foot wide by ten foot high. The Volkswagen bus that was referred earlier could drive right through that.
Yeah, yep.
Uh, it, it's just so out of scale. I mean, I don't know who the owner is or how they're gonna open a five-foot, um, impact glass door with metal frames, I, I just-
Uh, it's a pivot door, they actually-
I know it's a pivot door, but still, it's, it's, it's so massive, and the scale is, it just seems so out of character with the rest of the, the house. The other thing that, um, I don't know if the rest of the commission have, but, you know, these are ten-foot-high glass panels. Terry, can we go back, I hate to do this, go back to the previous application, have we still got it? I just want to show you what I would suggest, and it's, it's only a suggestion, but ten by eight is a massive piece of glass. Just look at the front, the rear elevation of that house. It's at the top, yeah, it's up, go back up. Okay, no, whoa, whoa, up. Thank you. Can you see what they did here, which I think helps? See that bar on the top, which is, creates a transom?
Mm-hmm.
They have the same height as you, actually, they're one foot lower. But that interruption just kind of puts everything back in scale. And the reason I'm saying this is because part of the house, as you just mentioned, it maintains a seven-foot height, window height.
Yeah.
And then you've got this ten-foot height through the central and the upper levels. Again, it's just a recommendation-
Sure.
That if you could introduce that seven-foot transom height and interrupt that ten-foot height, it would help the scale, but it's, it's just kind of steroids here, and I don't know.
I believe what the architect was, that, that room faces south, that, that, in that, that front room of the home is, it's a very large, wide-open room. I think he was trying to get as much light in there as possible.
He doesn't have to worry about that. And this doesn't interrupt the, the transparency, it's just a scale element, especially when you, you're trying to marry to an existing condition, which is only a seven-foot height. So that's a suggestion. Again, the style of the materials are, you know, choice of owner. Again, this has no shade trees on it whatsoever, they're all palm trees. This is a massive house. It's gonna have impact to the, the neighbors and the neighborhood. Again, I would just recommend that, you know, the landscape architect come up with some tree of, of a scale that will help mitigate that situation.
Okay.
'Cause you're going, as you, as you presented from the audience there, you're going from a single-story to a two-story, so I think some mitigating aspect is, is needed here. I don't, I don't mean to just, I just want to show-
Sure.
Or illustrate.
Appreciate it.
But that five-foot door, I don't know, that's-
It's, it's funny, it's becoming more and more common, the pivot doors, like wildly popular right now.
That's a commercial door, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's-
That's, I'm just saying, but it, it's what gives it the allowance to be able to be easy, it's, it's rather than being hanged.
Please ask them to interrupt the, the transom at least.
Okay, sure.
That's a strong suggestion.
All right.
When the prior applicant came in, I complimented Richard Jones on the completeness of the application, the elevation made it easiest for us, easy for us to view. Included in that were, uh, good engineering drawings of drainage, where the septic systems were going to be. Had all the pages of the drawings in here, so we could see first floor and second floor. And we had the architect present. I'm very disappointed, the architect, for here, we're making architectural comments and asking you to pass those along. The architect should be present, uh, and this should have been scheduled at a time that, uh, he could be here. And I find this disappointing in the, uh, package that I have before me. Second, um, uh, and this is the, the broadest and most important comment, is that this is, style of this house is totally out of character with the neighborhood of Inlet K. Uh, this is a very modern-looking house, uh, what, uh, slope proof there is on the two-story section is, uh, hidden by a sixty-two-inch parapet. Uh, is, you're aware of what the, uh, town has been, uh, directed towards, and, uh, a pending ordinance, uh, is for a thirty-foot parapet, uh, as a maximum in this town. Uh, and to put something of this mass, uh, in a neighborhood, across the street, and next door to a single-story houses, uh, and houses that, uh, that are not of this design, uh, is not consistent with the, uh, criteria in our current code. Uh, and I'm surprised that it, uh, wasn't massaged more than it has been before it came to us. Now, my question directly for you, uh, and, uh, is, uh, why, uh, the, the, so much of the central part of the existing house is torn out, and then the garage remains the same, uh, and it sits there, and the garage is non-conforming to our setbacks? And is that the reason why the roof of the garage is removed, uh, everything to the rear and to the side of the garage are removed? What, what's the, uh, why aren't you just taking that whole western portion of the house out, including the garage?
I'm not sure, Rick, actually, I'm not sure why that, uh, why the garage itself stayed, other than the, the, the foundation is expensive to replace, so if we didn't need to, if we're not building on top of it, it's pretty much staying in place. It was the setbacks. We had to keep both sides of the house. I'm sorry, Mike Raven, I'm, I'm the one that's gonna be hopefully building this house, but it was the setbacks.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yeah, it was the setbacks. We wanted to knock the house down, we would have lost twelve feet a house. So we had to keep both sides of the house, that's, just want to answer that one question, okay?
So, so you're intentionally building, uh, non-conformance to the existing codes, on the setbacks?
Technically, they're expanding a non-conformity, that's the, which is allowed.
Okay. Then this is a question, again, about the garage for staff. Uh, the garage doesn't meet the, uh, the ten-foot per car width. Uh, I believe the garage is in the eighteen-foot, uh, category, and it needs to be twenty-foot. Uh, doesn't that have to be conforming in order to, uh, be included in the count for, uh, parking spaces? In other words, I don't, we would only see this garage being able to be counted as one parking space, as, uh, not as two.
That, 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 that is, that is correct, and they're gonna have to make that appropriation on the internal renovation to accommodate for that.
Well, my design comment here would be, uh, that the parapet wall should be lowered to be, uh, more in conformance with the, uh, with what we, uh, are now going to, is the town of thirty-inch or less. Our thirty inches is the max and the minimum, I believe, for parapet walls in the pending code change. That the parapet wall should be, uh, wrapped around, uh, inside elevations, uh, concluded, and that the, uh, garage, um, uh, should be made conforming.
Any other?
So, I just, so, you know, when I read this, I thought, oh, it's just gonna be a simple-
Yeah.
Take it up, but it, to me, it looks like there's major surgery going on in the whole thing, and if I might, maybe I'm mistaken, the slab height for the living space comes up to the current code, but the garage itself is sitting back where it used to be. And I, I appreciate, you know, trying to take advantage of the existing situation, but it, this is, this is, this is a pretty major, uh, deal, and, and not just really a, an add-on to get a little bit more room. It, it, it's, it's a curious application.
Yeah, i- i- it is funny, we really only gained four hundred square feet, I think, five hundred square feet, somewhere in that range. It's not a large addition in that, in that sense, but it's also a total update of the home. Um, it's, it's just, you know, bringing it into the year two thousand nineteen. But, uh, but you're right, it is, it's a, it's a pretty major project, especially if you're, you know, to net five hundred square feet extra, but, but we're also repurposing the space that's there.
All right, can I ask, sorry?
Mark?
Yeah. Um, the attorney. This is obviously over the threshold of, you know, compliance, building and otherwise. What about the zoning aspect of it? Is that, is there a trigger there or a threshold for conforming?
Well, I mean, it sounds to me like, and I'll probably talk with Wayne about that a little bit more after this meeting, but it sounds to me like that most of the work is taking place, uh, it's not expanding the non-conformity. I guess most of the work is taking place inside the, you know, it's not, it's not like on the, it's not being built where it sounds like where the garage is, where it's extend, you know, extending into setbacks that are no longer allowed in the town. So therefore, if we aren't expanding the non-conformity, uh, then normally we, uh, allow that to go forward, but that's something that we'll have to take a look at as well.
Yeah, my question was to the threshold point, do we have anything in the code?
I, I get it.
From a zoning standpoint?
Right, no, I, I get it, where, okay, you've reached this, now everything has to comply. I understand, however, um, well, we'll, we'll have to take a look at that and see, because to, to see how that they were allowed to have the setbacks, i- if the code changed, was there variance or whatever, so I, I don't- variance or whatever. So I don't know those answers.
I have one other question.
Did you, I'm so sorry. Did you look at that way?
To answer that particular question, in terms of whether there's a variance for this, we don't have that information presently, and it wasn't disclosed to me. So I don't know.
We need to get that.
Yeah. I don't believe that. I don't know.
Wayne, you had a lot of comments that the applicant responded to. Are you happy with the responses?
Yeah, I, I am. I do have a couple of issues that needed to be worked out, and that's why it's before you. And a lot of these you've picked up on, in terms of concerns that you've got. They want to move forward, however, in order to move forward, they need to be in compliance with the codes. And they've agreed to make certain tweaks, and as, as, as you've highlighted, in terms of the garage space to be counted, those are part of the tweaks that they need to be coming to compliance, and they've agreed that they will, they will meet those codes. So even though all the documentation in front of you doesn't clearly identify that, they will not be getting a building permit unless all of these are brought into compliance.
How do you make an eighteen-foot garage twenty-foot wide?
They're gonna, they're, what they're, what they're gonna do, they're gonna have to move these walls. There's no other way. And they're gonna have to redesign the structural plans to indicate such. They're gonna have to do it.
It just doesn't seem like this is, this should have come before us yet. It doesn't seem complete.
Let me say, Mr. Raven, we appreciate the fact that you're upgrading your house and you're enhancing the neighborhood. So, thank you. Don't, don't get us wrong. On the other hand, I think we really need to see a more complete package with, with the data that reflects what actually is going to be built in that.
Yeah, I have to say, I have no idea why that's not the case. I do know, at least how I've been communicated with, these plans have been in front of Wayne. I spoke to Wayne. I actually had a nice conversation. I said, do you have any concerns, anything we need to know? I was kind of led to believe, I thought today was going to be kind of a pretty smooth process. I haven't, I'm very surprised that there are so many questions and concerns about this house. I really thought at every step of the way, we were keeping the appropriate people up to date. Apparently not, but that was my perception. So, just if I say, I'm extremely disappointed, now I'm wondering whether I even want to live in this town. And I want, I may just sell this thing. I mean, this, this house is nineteen sixty-five. It needs, I mean, it is, we've been living in it in two years just so we could do something like this. So, yeah, I'm very disappointed myself.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but, you know, if the lot can't sustain, you know, the amount of, for your program, then could you look for another lot? Is that not an option?
Yeah, that, that won't be an option for us. But I will say, I mean, someone referred to as a massive house, it's a forty-three-hundred-square-foot house.
Scale, it's all about scale.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry.
Relative to the neighborhood, forgetting about the style, which I agree with, Rick, is in Congress with the neighborhood, but.
Yeah, the neighborhood, the neighborhood has a bunch of ranches on it, so if that's what, if that's what you want, then, yeah, you're right. It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily match all the other ranches from nineteen sixty-five. That is true.
No, but the scale is the mass of this house relative to the adjacency. You can look at the, just look at the illustration there. Your height is, is three feet above any of the other homes in the area. It's the floor-to-floor height.
Yeah, it's a point lot. Part of the reason why we wanted those, those large doors is because of the way it fades, the faces. Right now, it's a very, very dark house inside, so we're trying to add a little more light to the inside of the house, especially from the front.
It's, and again, I'm not thinking about it. What I'm suggesting is just to scale it down to a little bit more.
I don't know what that means, scale it down. What do you want to do? What are you asking? I'm just trying to.
Ten-foot height. These are eight-foot doors here, okay?
You want the doors to be, is that what you're saying, with the doors are smaller?
No, no, I'm not saying. My suggestion was to create a transom interruption, but even the width, I mean, these are, these are very, these are almost like storefronts, commercial scale. That, that three panel that you have in the middle there, that's your entry door.
That's pretty much the only light we're going to get in the front of the house.
Yeah, but you don't need, you leave the opening the same size. You just divide it up differently, just in scale. But your architect, that's, I agree with Rick, it's unfortunate the architect isn't here, because he could be the one that understands and explains to you, so.
Because that's a minor, that's a minor issue, putting a transom in there, because you don't break up your life.
You're not, you're not reducing the area.
Right, okay.
You're just, you're just.
But it sounds like, that's honestly, it sounds like that's really a very, there's a lot of concerns about this house, not just the doors.
Well, I think the parapet that's been introduced, which is that band, that heavy band, which is what, about six feet?
Sixty-two.
Yeah, five foot and two.
So we have the parapet, we have the doors, what else?
The garage.
The issue with the garage is it's not wide enough, big enough?
Well, let me ask, and maybe I'm missing something. Right now, you have a two-car garage. So I look at this plan, are you, are you adding?
Yes.
You are, yes, okay.
Adding a third.
And you're, and you're bringing it out forward ahead of the existing building line. Right, which is, oh, good. I just want to understand.
And there was a reason why we wanted to have it flush, but there was definitely an architectural reason why we, why it had to. I don't remember what the exact reason was.
Yeah, you want to break that whole limit.
Yes, good. Is the, is the parapet wall, is it necessary?
I mean, we, we happen to like, I understand, not everybody here does, we happen to like a little bit more modern look, and that was, the whole reason of that was just to give it, even though we were still going to have the pitch, to give it a little bit more of a modern look. There's a style that Greg would be able to give you the name of it here, and it's very much in that style. Remember the guy's name, the architect that this was? There's an architect that does something that's very similar.
Richard Meyer.
What's that? No, 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 no. It's, it's, again, he, he, I think he would call this more of a transitional kind of, this is not ultra, ultra, ultra-modern. You can't make a nineteen sixty-five house ultra-modern. We're keeping the whole other, all those three bedrooms on the other side, it's staying exactly the same. We're just trying to fix the.
You're talking, you're explaining the problem, I'm afraid, because you're trying to blend something that's really not consistent.
Well, he would say it is. And again, I can't speak, I'm not an architect, so I can't speak to it. But he, there's definitely, I mean, Greg is a pretty reputable architect. I know he's done stuff in this town, so I don't, I can't speak to what his thought process was from there.
All right, but I don't know what.
And Brian, we're not operating under the new ordinance right now.
That is correct. You're still under the old ordinance, where you can make recommendations to give to Wayne, where he, you know, before he issues a permit, that he can look at that to see, you know, how that complies with our current code and building code.
So, let's, let's then, given that situation, so let's go back and try to summarize the comments that we want to get to Wayne, just so that it's absolutely.
Yeah, I want, I just, it would be very helpful for me to know what is being asked, because then we have to make a decision if we punt, sell, and move out of here, or if we're actually gonna, because our, the clock's running on us. We've got a, so we're not going to do this for the next six, twelve, nine months. So maybe we can write down everything that we need to do, and then we can figure out what we're going to do next.
Good, and I appreciate the work you're doing, so don't get me.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money to get to this point, so I, I'm, yeah.
And we're not here saying we don't like modern.
Yeah.
I mean, it's with us.
No, it's, I get it, I get it. I just want to get a list of the things we need to do.
We're a proportionality.
Okay.
So let's, let's go back and let's kind of summarize the points for Wayne to consider, beginning with, number one, the potential transom on that, the three panels of front doors. Keeping the same width, the same height, but adding a transom. To break it up.
I mean, you're just trying to marry two different scales here, so.
Rick, you, you had, Rick.
Garage compliance, zoning compliance, and the parapet either eliminated or reduced to a more appropriate.
Can you tell me, again, the garage, what's the issue with this specifically, what's wrong with the garage?
We, we have a code that says that the minimum size of a garage parking space is ten-foot by twenty-foot, and you have an eighteen-foot-wide garage, so ten-foot times two isn't a two-car garage.
Wayne, did you mention that? Did that ever come up, that issue with those?
That's, doesn't affect this, this bill, though, I don't think.
Does that affect this bill, Wayne?
It, it does, because they're adding in, I mean, when did they submit? Did they submit after the ordinance went into effect?
They submitted after the ordinance.
Okay, so then, it would be applicable, the new requirements for the garage, the interior or the garage space would apply in this particular situation.
We would have addressed it, we just never, I never heard that issue.
I was going to say, Greg worked really closely with naming and zoning on this project.
I mean, like, they talked weekly, so that's why I'm, we're just so surprised that this is something that we somehow did not, we would have done something with it, we just weren't informed.
Mr. Raven, we've been in a bit of transition ourselves, so we, I apologize for the, for the confusion.
And also, I think, because that garage itself stays in place, and perhaps, and I think you asked me this, Rick, maybe that's why Greg Jones, the architect, maybe he left it there, maybe that was a discussion between him and zoning, you know, months back when he was designing this, I'm not sure. But it wouldn't be that difficult to make a twenty-foot wide.
Okay, good. So let's leave that on the table.
Yes.
That's item number two. Item number three.
I thought you mentioned three things, Rick. Did you men, what did you mention?
Parabed garage and adding transoms.
And again, landscape to try to mitigate.
Can I also, I want to understand that, too. When you say you want to add shading, is that five trees, one tree? Like, what are we, what are we talking about?
It's the type of tree. Right now, we've got palm trees, which don't.
There is one, there's an olive on the, that side, you know, that's a shade tree. So I didn't know if you were talking about in the front.
In the front.
Again, I just want to get the magnitude. Are we looking to have trees all lined in the front? Are we talking about one tree? What are we, what are we talking about?
We're just trying to encourage a shade tree, which is a canopy tree.
So one shade tree would suffice that?
It could help in lieu of some of the, these are very small palm trees that are depicted on the landscape plan.
Okay.
Again, just to appreciate, it's just your pretty mass versus what's there. Just, again, to mitigate, I use the word mitigate, to soften. I can't speak for it.
I believe we have a code now that requires a shade tree in the front.
Yeah.
Does it? But it's, it just required a dominant tree.
It's called a street tree.
A street tree. It's not specified, though, being deciduous or palm, I don't think.
Well, let's put that, Wayne, you'll sort that out. Okay, so we've got.
I will.
If my counting is right, we've got three items then, for you to consider, Mr. Raven.
Sure.
Good, okay, great. Okay, so with that, unless anybody else has any more comments or questions, let's close the judicial hearing portion of this and look for a motion from the board.
Well, if I can, just real quick, was this open to the public?
Yes.
I couldn't remember, okay.
Well, let me, let's just make sure. And, oh, I'm sorry, you did indicate you wanted to talk, so I apologize.
I hadn't just sworn in. Didn't see the need, I swear that I speak the truth. Martin Vishalak, Five Engel Drive. My concern is really more of a technical kind, towards possibly changing the code for the future. If there is a non-compliance on setbacks, as they stand today, and there is more than fifty percent, we're getting over that threshold, I think that should trigger that you need to come into compliance. If we don't have that on the code book, we should definitely put it on the code book, because there's a reason why we have setback lines, there's a reason why we're doing all of these things. Once somebody makes a, an improvement that goes over the fifty percent threshold, I think we should make it into compliance. That, that is really.
That's a good point. Is there a consensus on the part of board members to direct staff to take a look at that and get some opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to take, kind of take a look at that anyway, and just see where that is. There might, the code might already address it one way or the other. So my concern is that when you have, even if you're increasing by more than fifty percent, if you have an existing structure, there's certain things that you have to look at in that particular situation.
Good, yeah. Thank you, that was a good point. Appreciate it. Okay, then let's move on. A motion of recommendation or unrecommendation?
Do we need a motion, or just to give direction to staff?
Yes, you do, motion.
We need a motion.
So, move to have staff look at the items that, some of which you have already addressed, some of which were brought up today, work with the applicant to revise that as necessary and move forward.
You'll second?
I'll second.
A little bigger.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. So, I mean, that's, that's what we have. It doesn't stop the process, so that's just where we're at, so.
Just so I'm clear, when you say nay, then that means you don't want the house. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
What does nay mean?
We just don't agree with the process, but.
So what, can I, can I ask, what would you like?
The process is still moving forward.
No, I understand. But what does that mean?
Till, till some of these address that I can only speak personally, then my name may change to aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next part of the meeting, which is Agenda Item Number Four.
Good to speak to you.
That's right. That's fine.
Mr. Raven? Can I suggest, well, he may come back to us in a minute. I mean, it's out of our
If they are not able to come into compliance, the code that's coming forward by the code cycle, if they have not gotten a permit at that point in time?
Well, you know, here's where we're at. They've submitted, they will have to comply with their code before a permit will be issued, so that's the bottom line.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, Item Number Four, Comp plan amendments. Staff? What are we, what are we dealing with here with Comp plan amendments?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
This is an advertised public hearing on these matters. We have discussed these over the years. As you know, this started out as amending the coastal, coastal management element of the town's conference plan to address some state requirements regarding sea level rise, and not seal level rise, which is in the memo, so I apologize for And then, as we went through the process, we went in and there was suggestions for other amendments to the future land use amendment, to the conservation element, and the recreation, parks and recreation element. And largely, these had to deal with making sure that the town had environmental information as part of the development review process. Those were, those are new additions outside of the coastal management area, but since we last talked, there really hasn't been any changes. This is all just put together for your consideration. After, if you vote to move this forward, this would go to the Town Commission. They would have two public hearings. The first public hearing, they would hold then the whole application. The proposed amendments would get sent to the state, to the Florida Department, various departments like DOT, EPA, actually DDP, but various state departments, and the Treasure Coast Regional Plant Council. And they would have sixty days to make comments, recommendations, suggestions, then it comes back to the Town Commission for final consideration. And they have the option whether to adopt those comments or recommendations or not. So, that's, that's where we are in the process.
Great. Do you have any questions of all of your staff or the staff? Great. Do you have any questions of all your staff or the staff?
I know we're going to run long, so I want to just keep, keep it moving. Objective six, Marty, district development to seventeen, thirty dwelling units in the entire town. Where did we come up with that number?
That was a number that is currently within the conference plan, and that was created by looking at your future land use categories in the town. And looking at basically the maximum amount of units you could fit into those units. There's some assumptions being made. Right now, the town is less than sixteen hundred units, so there is, even with some redevelopment, we would stay underneath that cap.
Just wanted, no, I'm fine with it.
It's a good question.
Marty, just one under the coastal management element. Did we always have that dune vegetative analysis requirement?
Which policy? I'm sorry.
It's on the coastal, second page, coastal management element. Third one down, fourth one down, modified policy one point four point two.
No, and just so you know, the underlined sections in this is the new sections. If it's underlined, it's new.
And in the future land use element data and analysis update?
Yes.
I know there's one place somewhere else that talks about having no commercial, but there it says there are very little commercial improvements left in town. What does that refer to, because we have no commercial, correct?
Well.
Because multifamily is covered elsewhere.
No, you, by, by agreement, you still have one commercial piece of property in town. But that's because of a final judgment in a court case a number of years ago.
So Marty, is there anything here that is a major change? This is, these are more updates, would you, is that how you would?
These are updates, the, the, the majority of the changes is within the coastal management area, and that the town will be, and has begun the process of looking at the issues tied with sea level change, climate change, you know, rain flooding, drainage, those kind of issues.
Other than that, there's nothing that, this.
Nothing that would change any land use, is not changing, it's not increasing the amount of units within the town. We're not changing any of the infrastructure requirements. This is more geared towards addressing the state concerns and making sure the town has all the environmental information.
Good, okay, good.
Once you do development review.
Thanks, Wayne. So with that, any other comments?
Added policy one point five point three, which requires the town to seek additional beach access for town residents during the development review process for the redevelopment of multifamily properties?
Yes.
What does that reference?
That, it was a recommended policy to encourage beach access for residents. And one of the best ways to address that is eventually when the multifamily properties along the ocean do a redevelopment. It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be an elaborate system, but it doesn't even require it. It just look, it's something for when we get to that point of redevelopment, that would be one of the issues for the town to look at.
And what is the dune vegetative analysis? What do you want done with it? What, what is it being provided for?
We're looking at a couple issues. First, the conditions of the dune height with those kind of physical aspects, and then also the vegetation. Whether it's been overrun by invasives, or are there protected species there that need to be protected and not being built over.
And, and just to make sure everyone looks through the, you know, the, the items in here, as you will get to a discussion a little bit later on, on looking at a proposed CCCL ordinance. There probably, if, if these things are adopted by the commission and we go forward with that, we will probably need to make some changes in our code. Because there are certain requirements in here, such as, if you just look on the conservation element, objective one point four is a new objective. So there's going to be some further regulations in environmentally sensitive areas that we would require further, you know, further paperwork from any developers coming in. So there are some things in here that, that there would be requirements that we would need to enact, enabling ordinances to provide for this. I just want to make sure you all are aware of that.
So we have a motion of recommendation to the Town Commission or non-recommendation?
We need to open it up for a public hearing, though. This is an advertised, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Any public comments? Hearing, none?
I make a motion.
Second.
And, and that's the motion to approve, to send it on, the recommendation? Okay.
It's a very good update.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the next item?
Nice job, Marty.
Yeah, good. Yeah, big job. Number five, court amendment regarding coastal construction line. Staff?
I'll probably just kind of start this off a little bit. We were directed to kind of make changes regarding development east of the coastal construction, or I guess, for lack of a better term, along the ocean. And there are two lines, and actually, hopefully, you all have the map that, that is attached, that shows the current adopted nineteen ninety-seven line, which is further west, and then the previous nineteen seventy-nine line, which is further east. And some of the proposals, and we aren't really looking for so much a recommendation here, as more direction to see where you would kind of like to go on this. Some of the things in the code or in the ordinance that we have proposed is that any, any structures that are going to be, that will encroach or go further east of the nineteen seventy-nine coastal construction control line, which is the easternmost coastal construction, or the one that was adopted back in nineteen seventy-nine, that there would be a variance process that we would need to go through on that. And then the variance would go to the Board of Adjustment, and they would be looking at those seven criteria from the Board of Adjustment, that they would be looking at that. Further, we were also, the, another issue that staff has had in the past, or that we continue to kind of have, is developing or is determining the lot size or developable lots, developable land lot size for a structure that is being built next to the ocean, because the code currently provides, well, it's kind of lot size is determined by, I don't know if it is the Palm Beach County Department of Health or DEP. Neither one of them really determined that eastern lot line, so that has kind of been a little bit of an issue. And so we're trying to provide something in the code that says this is the lot line that we will go with. And that's what we have provided in, where we take it, where we talk about under sixty-seven dash seventeen, that the area taken into consideration for determining lot size for those properties boarding on the ocean shall be excluded from the calculation. The land that is east of the nineteen seventy-nine line. So that is, as you can see, that we're really referencing that nineteen seventy-nine line. You all may not want to go in that direction, you know, that's, that's why this is kind of a discussion, and I know Lisa Trappetti is here, that she probably has some comments on, on that as well. But that's just kind of a real quick overview of the reason this is before you, and I don't know if Tracy has any comments either.
Yeah, I just want to say that the reason why we're looking at this is, number one, for dune preservation, and number two, to protect the properties that are building close to the ocean due to sea level rise. Those are the two big issues that we're trying to solve.
Just let me ask quickly, do you see each lot as a case-by-case analysis? Or do you see this as something that we can just say, let's do it this way across the board? Or is each oceanfront lot unique enough in its characteristics that it would require a one-by-one review?
Well, and, and I think that's why we're here in front of you. Okay? Because that's, that's part of the problem, okay? Yeah.
Let me just say, I think the seventy-nine line should be the point of reference. The eighty-nine is, is out of the question, so the point of reference should be that seventy-nine line. However, we want to use that as the easterly most development, that's where we should start. And then for properties that have, that are currently in front of that line.
Or you mean east of that line?
East of that line.
Right.
And could go through the variance process, just to make it simple. Let's just try and make it simple.
That's what a lot of other towns do as well.
Good, okay, good.
Let's not come up with a.
Yeah, that's great, Marty.
Right, now, I mean, I can tell you the, the way that we were looking at some of this, some of the stuff that is already existing east of that line. You know, the thought was, well, it's really kind of grandfathered in, and we, we know that when you go to DEP, DEP allows you to build to, build a structure. If these structures are already existing, they allow you to go in that footprint, we would probably be looking at the same type of thing, unless we get some other direction, where if there's a structure, or a pool, or whatever, an accessory structure, existing east of the seventy-nine line now, we wouldn't allow that to be, I guess, for the, you know, the, if this passes, the non-conformity would be increased, but would they be allowed to, to go back in that general footprint? The thought was that they would, but that's, those are some of the discussions as well.
Yeah, I think the more concerning one is the lot area, and how to establish.
Yes.
As I mentioned previously, you know, we have so many smaller lots on, in this zone compared to other towns. I wish there was a way that we could somehow give those folks a break to use to the high-water mark, which is currently the reference, but.
Well, I mean, we can't, you know, we can kind of take it like on, as we dealt with the, some of the other code sections that we've done in the past, where depending on the lot size, do you want to allow a further and eastern boundary? I don't know. That's, that's the reason we're kind of here in front of you, because we, we do see that as well. And, and there is an issue when you have the real, you know, the RSE zoning district versus the smaller zoning districts to the south. You know, do you, do you want to kind of make some accommodation there? I think zoning-wise, I think based on zoning districts, we could probably look at some of that stuff if, you know, depending on the direction of the board.
Well, I think Mark stated it very well in his first comments.
Yeah, I think that's, just let's make it simple.
Yes. It's a complicated subject. Any members in the public have any comment or input? Thank you. So what kind of, do you need a motion, or just are we giving you a direction, enough direction as it is?
I think, I don't know if Lisa or Wayne has any comments.
Well, just, just, just to go, just to go through the, the process of why, of where we are today. The P and Z Board has asked us to, to focus more on that nineteen seventy-nine line, which we did. And then the direction was to focus a little bit more as to the zoning areas involved. We also had a conversation with the representative from the Department of Environmental Protection to make sure that if we were in fact going to do something more restrictive, if, if they would be receptive, thank you, receptive to whatever we propose. And they were extremely receptive to us doing something more restrictive. We've looked at several codes of other municipalities and actually ultimately looked at, I believe it's Boca, and their process by which they use a variance in order to build in those areas that we're referring to. So the most, the easternmost line that has, that, that we can use is that nineteen seventy-nine CCCL. And it affects about thirty or so lots on that eastern side.
So just to summarize then, the, the frame of respite continues to be the seventy.
Seventy-nine line.
And, and yet, and each case, it's a case-by-case with variances depending on the circumstances. And that's it. And it's simple, and it matches what other communities have done, and it seems to work.
Yeah, if, if I can. Now, some of the other communities, they, they might have had a different variance process than the standard variance, you know, the standard seven criteria that's out there. I don't know if you all have any concerns or comments about that, because that is a pretty high standard to meet. Also, the question is, how do you, is, is the board comfortable with going forward where there's an existing structure, a pool, an accessory structure, whatever it is, that's existing in east of the seventy-nine line now? To allow that to remain regardless of the type of, say, as an instance that came up previously, where even if the structure is removed, to allow that to still be built back to that current, to that current setback? I believe that's what DEP allows now, but is there thought to allow that to occur, where it'd be a little bit different than our normal grandfathering process, where if someone comes in and they remove the structure completely? But it's kind of like, look, you, you had previously existed to this point, we'll allow you to build back to this point, not exceeding what was there before, but we'll allow you to, to go to that line without seeking the variance process. Is there any thought or, you know, comments on that?
I think the point is that, you know, in most cases, there'll be a legitimate hardship from a lot area standpoint, which then justifies the variance. I think in, when I say majority, I'd even, not being a gambler, it'd be about ninety-eight percent. So I think, again, that we should leave that somewhat flexibility, because you, you can't just overlay an existing property and then assign, you know, new criteria. I think, I'm just talking about lot size, and that's why I think we've got to look at the lot area a little bit more closely. And I think it may have to be a redesignating of some of the zoning, the residential character, you know, classification.
For clarification, you're talking about the, everything we've been talking about is the seventy-nine line?
Correct.
Correct. But the draft ordinance says we adopt the ninety-seven line.
That, that's right. We, we've adopted the nine, because Palm Beach County has adopted the ninety-seven line, and that's the line, that, that is the applicable coastal construction control line, that where DEP is, gets involved, anything built east of that. But as far as variances, or as far as lot size determinations, we're looking at the seventy-nine line, which was adopted, you know, twenty years prior to the ninety-seven line, which is much further east than the ninety-seven line.
So then if you have a home that the ninety-seven line cuts through the middle of, you apply for a variance because of the seventy-nine?
No, no, no.
No, you apply for a land development permit for a home that's east of the CCCL.
Okay.
And it just involves DEP, anything east of the ninety-seven?
That didn't change.
DEP and Town Ordinance are completely different.
Yeah.
Five seventy-nine.
And just for clarification, that's, that would be your furthest east a structure could go. It's not a setback.
Understood.
It's not a setback.
Understood.
Well, I mean, you do know that we have a number of structures here in town that are east of the seventy-nine line.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Other towns use the seventy-nine line and then impose another setback. We're saying the seventy-nine line is your rear setback.
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
The way it's proposed right now.
Well, I mean... I think that's an important point, because I take a glance at your, what it really could do is encourage development further east to that line, which I don't think's really our objective here, where we want to limit, that is the limit of that. And then there's the two points, is that, one is whether it's with a setback or without a setback, where's the development line? And then where's the lot, the lot size calculation, which is, I don't think we're prepared to make that determination today, because, you know, someone is, has a existing home or a new home that is east of the seventy-nine line, but they own property along Ocean that's on the other side, that's been historically used in their calculation of lot size, and we have to determine if we are going to make any change to the lot size separate from this. That's a, probably a much bigger question.
I think we can hopefully come back with maybe some other language, and just so you know, on the seventy-nine line, there is no setback off that line. I mean, somebody could build right now what we're proposing, right, and, you know, whatever structure it is, they can go right up to that line. So we aren't proposing a setback off that line, it's just, that is the final line.
But you couldn't do any new development, it would have to be something that was already there, because the ninety-seven line is so far west from there, and, and we're not going to grant a building permit all the way up to the seventy-nine line if you don't have building there now, correct?
Uh, no, no.
Well, see, well, I mean, currently, right now, somebody can come in and propose something, and...
It's passed the...
That's right. If DEP is okay with, as far as letting it go up to the mean high water line or whatever, then DEP is really the determining factor. That's the reason that staff was having these issues and kind of bringing this in front of you with, you know, at your direction as well, so...
They're trying to be more restrictive.
Yes.
Okay, let's, next item is the generator, and I'm going to use my second, because I've got a generator permit application pending. I will step back.
Well, okay, so the reason for this, and this ordinance kind of came in front of you at the last time, and there was some comments on it. What we are proposing, and this is kind of coming from the building official, because what the building official is, or the issues that the building official is having here in the town of Ocean Ridge, which kind of goes to member Marsh's comments, where some of the lot sizes are not that big, so therefore, in order to install a generator that would meet the building code, where it's got to be so far away from a, a structure, a window, whatever, in quite a few places, the only place that it could go is within the required setback. However, our code doesn't really allow that unless there are certain, I guess, it's kind of nebulous language that talks about if there's no other place to put it or something like that. So based on the comments that you had at the last meeting where you were talking about the noise, there is, and I believe we have attached, the current town code regarding noise, which is in place now, and it talks about generator noise. And so what, the, the change that we have talked about here, or the thing that we've added, we've kept the, you know, still allowing the generator to encroach no closer than five feet, you know, to a property line. However, the testing of permanent generators shall only occur during the hours that construction is allowed in the town, and so in hopes of, you know, when those things do go off, and they normally go off for five-minute periods, that it would not be, you know, twelve o'clock at night or something like that. And the, however, otherwise, I imagine in the event of a hurricane or power outage or something like that, then everything is, you know, I mean, the generator goes on and it's, whatever time it is, it, it works. So there's not really an enforcement of the noise ordinance at that time. So, but otherwise, that the noise ordinance would apply, that anybody who installs a generator would either have to, you know, if they don't meet the decibel level requirements, then they would have to somehow put landscaping or some other structure around it to quieten it.
Let me, I just want to clarify one thing you said. If a person's exercising their generator...
It's the testing or whatever, yeah.
Well, it's, no, I mean, the generator has to be, if you have a large enough, say, a thirty KW generator, it requires weekly...
Yes, it goes on, yes.
But you said tied into construction hours.
The, the noise part of it, that it can only test, that that test can only occur...
Between eight and six.
Right, between eight and six, and on Saturday between, what is it, nine and one?
Eight and one.
Okay, otherwise, the generator cannot be tested at other times.
And where's the levels? I couldn't find the levels.
Uh, it's toward...
I can't read it.
It is the...
There it is.
Thirty-four dash ninety.
Okay, I got it.
Ninety-one, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
It sounds like a good compromise.
Yep.
I got, I do have a question here, Brian. We're looking at sixty-four fifty, item C, and it describes that the generator has to be five feet from the property line, right? But now we've gone from five to ten feet from all windows and doors and from any neighboring houses. I looked at my yard, and I looked at a number of my neighbors' yards, some of whom already have generators, and the setbacks from the property line to the existing structure in my yard is about fourteen, thirteen to fourteen feet. And I have often thought about putting in a generator, I just need to sell my boat, I guess. But the, the ten feet makes it, it really can't be done. We're talking about windows on my house, I'd either have to move it to the front yard or move it to the backyard, but I definitely couldn't put it along the side of the house, which creates a problem.
Well, Wayne can, yeah, Wayne can explain that. I just had one put in last year, and I was trying to do the same thing, not here, but in Delray, and it was very clearly explained to me that, no, the generator cannot be any closer than ten feet to, you know, your...
Operable window.
Yeah, exactly, and so...
It's an operable.
Right, so...
Yeah, well...
And the reasoning for all this is carbon monoxide poisoning. Any opening, and if the generator's previous to this, there was no setback requirement, it could be five feet from a hole, I mean, it could be put right up against the hole.
Sure.
And as such, history has taught us that there were problems. The building code went ahead, and they recommended it's ten feet from any opening, and to Mr. Marsh, operable. So if it's a glass block, it, it's not, that's not counted, so that's the intent. Given the configuration of the smaller lots, and that's why we've discussed the five foot from a property line, we've tried to figure what number would work best and still make it as safe as possible during that installation process.
So clarify, we have fifteen-foot side yard setbacks, does it work in a fifteen-yard side yard?
In the fifteen-foot yard setback, that's correct. So the generator will be five feet from the property line, and it's ten feet from the home, and that's where the generator is going to be sitting, right smack in the middle of that, that, those parameters.
Would seem like you'd need more, because the generator pad is going to be...
Three feet.
Three feet. So we're talking about eighteen feet to comply with this, and so...
Well, the, the actual, the generator exhaust is, generates itself maybe bigger, but the actual exhaust itself cannot be closer than ten feet. So that point of the exhaust, the manifold, that's the portion that I'm going to do a measurement to determine where that opening of a window is.
So it will work at a fifteen-foot setback?
It will work, it will work, yes.
But, but smaller setbacks not, right?
Yes, yes, it's the opening of the house.
It said it can be right on the wall if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah. The opening's out there, yeah.
Okay. So it works, okay. Any public comment?
Yeah.
Neil?
I'll tell the truth.
Please.
Neil Henigan Island, Ninety-One Island Drive. When you get an application for a generator now, does it get certified to the noise level that it's going to put out?
It, it's, that's not a requirement, it's just a question that...
But you're attaching qualification here to the sound level at the property line, but you're never saying that the generator that goes there meets that requirement. I have a generator at the end of my street that's a V-six Toyota car engine, that when it runs at full power, I can sit in my office, and that's about a hundred and fifty feet away, and my office vibrates. Okay? You're, you're not requiring any size restrictions, you're not requiring any noise measurements, and when you reduce the distance by half, you increase, you double the measured noise, and you quadruple the perceived noise. That's what you're doing when you're moving at five feet. You're impacting a neighbor who doesn't have that generator. If you want to put a generator on your property, it should be up to you to find a place that it works, not up to the neighbor to suffer that five-foot noise pollution.
The current code as it stands does not even stipulate where that five feet or two feet were from the property line.
I understand. I'm just saying, I think you need to have a standard for your generators that's based on noise, not on distance. I don't think this is an answer. I think this is just highlighting a problem. It's highlighting an issue that I do agree needs to be addressed, but I don't think you're addressing it the proper way. There are scientific ways to measure the noise.
Well, it's both, it's really carbon monoxide and noise.
Correct.
What's, what happens in the process is, we're going to have, if there's a code case that comes where a neighbor complains, a decimal reading is taken to determine the noise level.
But you've already approved the generator, you've already pitted neighbor against neighbor. You should have a standard that if you put it in, I don't have an argument with you or my neighbor, because I know what the rules were. Right now, you're not saying whether that could be a five KVA generator or a forty KVA generator, and it could be five feet from the property line.
I think, I think it's a good point, but I think we now have criteria by where the decimal levels are designated maximums.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but we're not, we're not specifying that the generator meets that before it's installed.
I agree, and I was just about to say, it, it, I think the building department should have submission of the actual piece of equipment and see what the ratings of the equipment is.
And the noise output.
Right, and then see.
And it's very easy to calculate, if it puts out eighty dB, move five feet away, I can look it up in a table and tell you in thirty seconds what the noise is.
But then the town still has the position that if it's installed and it exceeds, say, the fifty dB level, then they can be red tagged.
Yeah, it's a two, it's a criteria going in and then after the fact.
Yeah, it can be evaluated if it becomes an burden.
So it's the thing we need to add.
If a neighbor feels that it's on...
I don't, I don't think the owner should be on the neighbor to find out what happened.
No, no.
It's on the permit.
We're all agreeing with you.
Okay.
We're all agreeing.
Thank you.
It's in the permit process. It'll be added to the permit process.
Thank you.
Yes.
Before and after.
Yes, that's good.
Okay, any other public comment? If not, recommendations for approval for the commission? And I'm out.
I'm out.
You're up, you're up.
I'm out.
Oh.
You're leaving, Ken?
No, no, I can't, I can't vote, because I've got a session pending.
You have to vote, Mark.
You have, you need to.
All right.
I recommend to approve the, was this approval of an ordinance?
Yes.
Approve the ordinance with the modification that the permitting process involve the decibel rating and that it meet our current code of ordinance for nuisance prior to a permit being issued.
I second.
Or is that prior to a permit being approved?
I said issued, but I approved.
Okay, I mean, I'm just thinking that if, where would it be better, Wayne? Would it be, if they can't show that they meet the decibel reading, then...
They can't be approved.
Then we can't approve it.
Okay. So do you want that change in the code as well? Because is that a change in the bill? That's not in the, I'm just trying to give you the authority to deny a permit. Would you like some language in the ordinance to basically say something to the effect of where, you know, whether or not we have number C, we added number five that says that prior to a permit, prior to a permit being approved, that it must be demonstrated that the generator meets the town's noise ordinance? Is that what you all would, okay?
So moved what the town attorney said.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to the agenda, item number seven, for the amendment regarding signs.
I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Next month we'll start at seven.
Yep, we have three coming next month.
I think these two are pretty terrible.
Yes.
And the coconut picking, I love, ready.
Before you leave, Don McGreever, Iron Ridge Boulevard, I just wanted to say you stole my thunder this morning. It's been over a year and a half since we passed a yes, no, or maybe, and we've got one more vote to go, so keep at it.
Thank you.
It's hard work, we got it done.
Yeah, we got it done. I love it.
Take over.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, back to the agenda and regarding signs.
Okay, yes, let me see, this, this item was before you for discussion, I think it's your last or at your April meeting, and there were some comments made, and the major changes that we made in the sign code was to, or changes, the only changes that we really made in the sign code was to reduce the maximum number of signs per parcel. I think we had four, we reduced it to three. The maximum sign area, we had six, we reduced it to three square feet. Now, the other comment or the other thing, we also had reduced, and this is on page sixteen of nineteen, the chart, the other thing that we had changed, we had minimum spacing of signs from other signs, it was fifteen feet, we changed that to five feet. And then on minimum sign setback for ground signs, from the property line, we still kept it zero feet for the front property line, however, there was some discussion that said the setbacks for the side and the rear property lines, that we should follow those setbacks and not allow the signs in those setback areas, and that's what is in front of you here. So I think those were the major changes that we had made from the sign code from the, you know, from your April meeting until this meeting.
I have comment and question. First, the question, what, what is defined as temporary for the signs? Is there a timeframe? Because I looked through twice and didn't find that.
Okay, there is a, the only thing that, we have something on, that's on page seventeen of nineteen, well, let me see, let me go back to the definitions. A temporary, and that's the easiest way that I can try to explain it, and which may not be a very good explanation, I will tell you that now. The temporary sign is, shall be in a sign that is not permanent sign, shall include signs formerly known as temporary election, window, political, free expression sign, real estate, directional, construction sign, grand opening, those type of things. So it's almost like these are examples of what it is, because it's very hard to define, you know, somebody could say, well, I'm putting up an election sign for, I don't know, let's say an election that's going to be held two years from now. Would that qualify as a temporary sign? Well, it very well might if it meets these, you know, we would probably be looking at it whether it would be, you know, it very well could be a free expression sign, who knows? So it's just, once you get into free speech, okay, it's very hard to regulate, I will just tell you that right now.
I'm trying to separate free speech from commercial applications, and that's a...
Well, I, I wouldn't try to, because, you know, commercial is, you know, okay, the, on temporary signs, a commercial would be like a builder putting their sign up, saying, hey, I'm building a pool, I'm building this house, whatever. I would still probably look at a real estate sign as a commercial type of sign, that that is, you know, because we're advertising, here's, here's a home for sale.
So, so does that, if they are commercial signs, does that no longer fall under the temporary sign order?
No, no, no. No, 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 because they're temporary commercial signs. Because if you look in number one, under the, on that page sixteen of nineteen, maximum number of signs per parcel, and there's a little subscript up there, number one. If you go down to number one, the number of temporary commercial signs per parcel shall be no more than two. So, out of the three, you could have a real estate sign, a contractor sign, but you couldn't have any other commercial type of signage.
And I'm trying to set some limitations around the length that commercial type signs and the size of commercial type sign. I really'd like to see commercial different than free speech issues. And primarily, I've looked quite a bit since we were here in our town and adjoining towns. And to go from the small real estate sign that we have to a larger sign, I think would be a blight on this town.
I hear you.
We, we have high-priced homes that often take a year or more to sell and to allow larger signs to be posted for that length of time. Or a builder's sign that sits there for a year during construction. That's, those, these are commercial applications meant for advertising. And I think they should be under a different criteria than temporary free speech. That's really my view. And I think we'd be making a mistake to go to larger real estate signs.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, I can take whatever direction you want to give me, I will certainly do that. I can kind of tell you that, you know, if we would call out real estate signs, I mean, if you were looking at like the real estate, and I don't know what size commercial, or say like for builder signs or something like that, I don't know what size, those signs are allowed now. I don't know if we have a size restriction on them. I see different sizes of those. It seems like it's typically whatever the builder has, whatever they normally put up is the size of the sign that goes up.
Well, temporary to me is open house sign. And if they want to put up a good-sized open house sign on a Sunday afternoon, but they're gonna put a sign across the street for me that's gonna be up there for a year, I think those are little signs.
Right. Yes, I mean, I can, well, you know, if we try to call out real estate signs differently than the other temporary signs or the, the construction type signs different from other real estate signs, it would not be in compliance with the Supreme Court case. That's, I'll just leave it at that.
And that's the reason that we're here, because right now we clearly have small real estate signs and our other temporary signs are allowed to be larger. So, we're making this modification because of this recent court ruling.
Well, one of those, we're regulating content and they have said you cannot regulate content. So, that's, that's the reason this is in front of you. And by, you know, I mean, look, once again, I can take whatever direction you want to give me, I will certainly take, it's just, I just need to make, you know, I just need to kind of state that for the record.
It seems like there's two ways that we could get to our objective, or at least the objective I'm promoting. Is, is it, one is that we define temporary as a period of time of which a year-out real estate sign is no longer temporary. Or we separate commercial signs from non-commercial. And presuming the free speech issues come under the non-commercial heading. This regulation of commercial signs is something every community does. I mean, we're talking, if we, if somebody was talking, you say we have one commercial establishment and if that commercial establishment wanted to come in and put whatever kind of sign, we would regulate that.
In most cases, in most other codes, there's very few places, well, there's not very many places out there that have no commercial businesses. So, there is a commercial, a specific commercial sign component to that, that city's sign code. Because, to be honest with you, commercial, and it's really permanent commercial signage is the, is, takes up the vast majority of a city's sign code because that's where the violations or that's, that's where the issues are. In this particular, you know, here in Ocean Ridge, you really have no commercial property. So, you don't, it's not addressed. It is just, you know, permanent signage, which is really the signage for the different multifamily properties, is really the only permanent signage that you have. All the other signage is either exempt where it's either governmental signage required by, by some law, regulation, or ordinance, or you have temporary signs. And so, that's the reason that the, you know, that most of the changes you see here are for the temporary signs because that's the basic issue. I certainly understand what you're saying.
I mean, I see the small real estate signs in Palm Beach, I see them in Manalapan.
Oh, I do, yes.
And I, and I'd like to continue to see them in Ocean Ridge.
Likewise. Can we do that? I mean, I know what you just said. Well, can we try to do that?
Let me.
Brian, is there a way to put a definition for a commercial sign in there and include real estate and construction?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm just, you're regulating content, I can't be more plain than, yeah, I've looked at it. You're regulating content, so.
So, then you go back to the definition of temporary being a time and?
It's, it's all, it includes all of those type of things.
Can you say the sign can be there for a year if it's, you know, the small one and it can only be there for two months if it's the big one?
Well, temporary signs, if we aren't regulating content, they all need to be the same size. So, do you want to make all the signs the same size as, or try to make the same size as the real estate sign? And I would caution against that because then you may be infringing on free speech.
Is it possible that the realtors might comply voluntarily with this? Because it's what they're doing now. And sometimes if it's not broken, you don't need to fix it, maybe? Well, I mean, they're doing it, they're doing it in other communities, so.
I mean, I think there's just been some recent issues that have come up, the reason this is kind of back in front of you. So, I'll, we'll, maybe on a staff level, we'll kind of take another look at it or something, see what you're.
Obukana?
Martin Bishrelek five Engel, I think you're gonna see from, how many residents do we have? A thousand seven hundred residents, that a thousand six hundred and ninety-five residents will definitely agree with you that the small signs for real estate is where we want to go. There's not gonna be an argument about that. We have to find a way how to regulate them. If it's, if we can't do it by definition, then you're not gonna find compliance. As, as a, you know, I'm not a real estate agent, but somebody that advertises real estate and sometimes I put signs out, I will go for whatever I can. You know, I don't live here, it's not my house, I don't live here. And you're gonna have the same logic coming from the real estate agent that puts a sign out. They don't live there. We have real estate agents that are working in this town and that they will probably want to comply and the others don't. So, and now they're, they're competing against huge signs versus my small sign. It's just, it becomes a, we need to find, we need to find that way. Somehow, somehow.
Brian, can we take another look at what Gulfstream and Manalapan are doing?
Sure.
Yeah, that might be a good model too, and Palm Beach, a good model, but I hate to put it that way. But, okay, so what, what direction do you need to?
I, I think just that the comments I've gotten here, that we will kind of bring this back at some possible future date and kind of go from there.
Okay, next item, code amendments regarding parapets, I think this is just a clarification item.
Oh, yes, on the roof parapet, yes. That has already gone through, I think, first reading, is that right, Tracy? In front of the commission? And the reason this is back in front of you, because after you all had adopted it the last time, and Wayne, I think, had, you know, said, hey, look, by the way, the building code doesn't allow, the way it was brought before you the last time, the roof parapet height was twenty-four inches, that's what you all approved, that's what you all gave direction to. However, when Wayne looked, you know, the building code requires a minimum of thirty inches. So, we as staff said, look, and we presented it at the commission meeting this way, was that we're changing it from twenty-four to thirty because that's what the building code provides. Now, if you all do not agree with that, if you want to change your recommendation to the commission on saying, no, we wanted twenty-four inches, or if it can't be that, we want to do something else, then that's the reason this was brought back in front of you. Because staff changed your recommendation, I want to make sure you all are aware of that. That based on the building code, that there, we couldn't provide for, we couldn't allow twenty-four inches. It had to be thirty. And then the other change that we made, there was also the requirement that the residential accessory struc, or the residential structures, say, the AC units would then comply, would not exceed the parapet height, which was then the twenty-four inches. We had changed that, we likewise had to change that to mirror the thirty inches based on the parapet height. So, those were the two changes that we as staff made. So, if you all are not comfortable with that, if you want to take another look, if you want to do something else, now's the time to say, no, let's, you know, let's give further direction or whatever and we can certainly take that to the commission before second, you know, at second reading.
Now, I'd like to express my appreciation to the staff that they didn't hold this up for a month cycle. They made a wise decision and thirty inches, from my opinion, is just fine.
Having listened to the discussion at the commission meeting, there really, we didn't have a lot of choice. That was it.
That's correct.
And I agree with Rick, thank you for moving ahead. Well done.
So, it appears to be that's consensus, that that's okay, okay.
I think we have one last item on the agenda, that's the posted tree revision or addition that was handed past at the beginning of the meeting. Tracy or Brian?
I'll just very quickly, just, and then Tracy can, can jump in here on that. The, the main change on this is the duty to trim coconut trees. Now, the model, I think this was based on the Palm Beach model where they require coconut trees to be trimmed. I will say, and this provides that by August first, that the coconuts have to be off of there. The, let's see here, that coconuts, coconut blooms and dead or dying fronds. Now, and this is on your private property. The one thing that the Palm Beach model had in it that I do not have in here was Palm Beach had also provided that their building department or that their planning and zoning department, if a resident failed to do this, that their planning and zoning department, that town staff would go out there and do the trimming. I did not include that because I have some concerns about that. And plus, we don't really have a planning and zoning department to send out there to trim coconuts or to do anything on someone's private property. So, this would be handled, if someone fails to do that, it would be a code enforcement matter. And I understand that that could take a period of time to, to go through that code enforcement process, that hurricane season may be actually over before you, you know, the code enforcement process is concluded. But that was, you know, that was kind of about, I guess if we see where this is going to be an issue in the future, maybe we can try to address the timeline a little bit better. But I wasn't, I'm just, I wasn't aware of another process that we could really try to follow without possibly getting ourselves in some trouble, so.
We have a landscape contractor, right?
Yes, we do.
Could we not have them do it?
That's pretty specialized work, especially if they're tall.
I mean, they.
Somebody's gotta go up on spikes.
All landscape contractors do that.
No.
You know, I mean, I guess we could, but I was just.
Yeah, the town has a company that comes in and does ours that are on public property, so.
Right, I guess my only.
It's still a big deal.
Comment on that was if we did require them to do that, they would probably want something from us such as indemnification or, you know, I don't know what, but they would want something in the agreement from us allowing them to do that. And that's something that we would have to try to work out. So, I don't know if you want to talk about that or give further direction on that.
How did we come up with the August first date?
That was in the town of Palm Beach model. That's the, what I was, yeah, maybe Tracy can.
Yeah, I'd rather see it either June first or July first to make it more in line with hurricane season.
Typically, coconuts will put out at least two batches in a given year. I mean, mine have to give them trimmed twice a year. Is there mature coconuts every six months?
Don, you have a comment?
Don McGree to Nine Ridge Boulevard, I think we need to make it with June one. Thirty-day notice have to be done by July one. And then if they're not done by July one, then we assess a fine perhaps as opposed to being able to go on property and take care of it ourselves and whatnot. Because that's, that's really getting involved in a lot of labor and whatnot. So, if we could do, change those dates. And then the other thing would be too, we really need to get some formal notice other than the town website. We need to put that out on blast, get it in the local newspaper or whatever. But we need to let the residents know.
Can I just say, because I have a lot of coconuts in various palms, that I usually trim by June one, but with the heart of hurricane season really being September, October, I've got pretty full trees. I sometimes have them come back in August and do it again. So, June one might be too young, too soon. I would do July one with thirty days, August one. I just, I just think it's too soon.
That's a good point.
Yeah, good point, yeah. Well, shall we go with July one now and then really observe what's going on over the next year and then take another look at this?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah. And the concern with August one that was proposed is that, I'm not clear of what's the problem with August one. Is that we'd have a July hurricane?
July hurricane, maybe?
Well, August one, I think the point is by the time the notice came out, it would be in the middle of hurricanes, which, yeah, would be.
Compliance is.
Compliance, the timing of compliance.
Yeah, we all, by August.
And you're.
So, we start July.
The contractors get so busy with this, the tree contractors, that sometimes you can't get them to come no matter how much you love them.
Which is why I have it done in June and then have to have them come back and do minor work because they get slammed.
So, we go with July and see how it works and then, better than August, we all agree with that.
Okay, do you want me to bring that back to you or are you okay with July first as the date? And then, okay, do you want, do you want some direction in there as far as the thirty-day period? Or do you want that to just be like, well, staff will, if it doesn't, if they aren't complied with by July first, that thirty, I think if you want to just give direction, that thirty days would be, you know, that staff should send out notices after that period of time as far as during the code enforcement process to say, well, look, here's reasonable notice, thirty days. Or Tracy, would you like to see? I guess I'm just trying to procedurally, trying to think how that would work. I think we could put July first and then just see administratively how it, how it works and if we need to change it. The other thing too, I want to make you aware of, is that we had changed the section under number sixty-six one five-one, tree permits. I added another provision, another exception in there, is provided by one sixty-three point oh four five because that is the new, or it will be effective July first, the new state law regarding permits where if someone has an arborist on their property to say that the tree is dead or dying and that presents a hazard or something, they can have it cut down without getting a permit from the town or anyone else, they can just have it done, so.
Can I ask how it works with our ordinance cycle? If this was June one, the first reading would be in the month of June, the second reading would be sometime after July first, so.
It would be July first.
It would be on July first, then would it become immediately effective? And everybody who didn't know about this was out of compliance?
Well, I can tell you right now, the first year, we probably aren't going to, or my, well, I'll have to talk to Tracy, but it, it may be kind of spotty this first year, okay? Because it's just, you know.
Am I on the right track?
Yes, yeah.
We need a motion for approval?
Uh, yes.
Motion for approval?
Based on the change.
Based on the July one change?
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
No. I have, I have one quick question while I have everybody in the room. I have one quick question while I have everybody in the room. Six thousand nine, two houses over for me, still has a blue tarp.
Oh, gosh.
A year, more, every year, it's got a new blue tarp. It has a covered-over pool. It has non-managed anything.
Yes.
What can we do?
Yes.
And what do we need to do as a board up here?
Yes.
To give you teeth, or give somebody teeth?
Yes, yes, yes.
The owner had made several promises to the town to come into compliance. He was cited several times, he has paid a citation, however, he still hasn't fulfilled his obligation, lack of a better word. He's going to the June code enforcement hearing for numerous violations at this point.
Does it help if the public shows up at a code enforcement hearing? What, I mean, at what point does this town have a, a right to do something more? Because it's, it's, it's a hazard.
Yes.
It's a problem meeting.
Yeah.
Clearly, I'll do that, but...
Brian, Brian, can you, can you help us?
I'll take a look and see. I mean, you have, you know, your nuisance code, but I don't know, I, I would have to get with Wayne to see, does it meet the definition of a nuisance, which is kind of a, a high standard? If it does, then the town, I mean, if it is a, a nuisance that affects the public health, safety, and welfare, then does the town have the ability to, to kind of go on someone's private property to try to alleviate that nuisance? Yes, they do, but it, it is a high standard. I'll, I'll just let you know that, but I'll, I'll get with Wayne, and we can take a look at that.
And furthermore, is there a way to speed up the magistrate process and give it more teeth, other than just ending up with a lien on the property?
No, because the magistrate, the code enforcement process is governed by state statute, so there are limits to fines that are set forth in that, you know, that we can charge. And once again, it, you know, it, it may be just on, on the enforcement, where I, I think, you know, the town, not just here, but every town you always try to work with a potential, you know, someone who's violating the code, to try to get compliance that way before they, they, you know, you take them forward, but it obviously, it sounds like that they have made certain promises and not, not fulfilled that, so that's...
It is always a bad apple.
This particular one has been years. It's been since I've been their neighbor sixteen years.
Is this something the League of Cities might talk to the legislature about? Do you feel that, do you feel that the magistrate process and the ultimate lean is, is not strong enough, Wayne? Like, what's your opinion?
We've got, the, the due process is afforded to everybody, and we've got to be very careful of that. It, it's, it's tradition, traditionally done, where we try to work with people, to bring them into compliance.
Of course, sure.
Failure to do that, then the, the, as Brian has alluded to, the state's statute is, is in place. A repeat offender to that will then be faced with higher penalties. The, the property owner had indicated that we would be at the point of a complete demolition at this point. That has not taken place, and that was what we were led to believe us would be at this point in time. Feeling that he's now faced to, 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 to bring his defense before the magistrate hearing in June, and then due process will be afforded, yeah, the individual.
The property has not been leaned yet, though?
No.
May I just add, with respect to the League of Cities, it's very, very frustrating as a past elected official. We are preempted on many, many things, and that process is, is a perfect example of a preemption that we have no control over.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately.
Home rule, there's no such thing.
Not when it comes to code enforcement and the process by which municipalities have to follow with respect to homeowners and how they keep up their houses.
Thank you.
Okay, Don LaBrutto.
One last comment. I was looking at, we've already been through this issue on the proposed amendments to the town's comprehensive plan, but I was looking at this, and the future land use element. We don't really have anything in here that talks about time limits for completion of projects. It seems that if you start a building and then you run into problems, you can get extension after extension after extension. It seems to me that if we can do that, we should have some time limit as to how long a property or it should take to build a normal property. An example is the warehouse that we've got going up on A1A.
I don't think that would really be in the comp plan, that would be more in our code or the building code, and I don't know if Wayne has...
Well, if it's referenced in the comp plan, then we can put an ordinance, or we, you know, it's something in the comp plan that builders and so on and so forth can review before they start the building.
I mean, I think we already have it in our code, if I'm not mistaken.
Chapter one of it.
We do.
We made that adjustment, and we, we did institute a time limitation on it. A building permit can be renewed, just again, it's a, it's a general rule across the board for everybody, and they're allowed a six-month renewal with an approved inspection. So if your product is finished in six months, they can renew it for another six months. It gets extended another six months, so they're allowed, in essence, up to go to two years to complete a project. We now have that in our chapter one building code amendments. After that point in time, the permit then expires, and it's subject to code enforcement proceeding, which would up to removal of the structure, declaring it unsafe, whatever tools that you, you would be using in the code enforcement, but that was put into place.
So what are we looking at in, in total time?
Well, based on your prior comment of the example you used, I would suggest you may want to get with Wayne to talk about that one, because there were certain, I don't want to say extenuating circumstances, but there were certain other things dealing with that one, where that's, I think, more of the anomaly than, than the rule, but I, yeah, I understand what you're, what you're saying, and I don't know...
I think the same thing goes along with the comments with, with the House at six-zero-zero-nine. I mean, something needs to be done with that, it's been going on, and I tell you, someone that walks the dog every morning on, on Old Ocean, I'm changing my route, because I'm just so tired of hearing every resident ask me, what's going on here? How long is it going to take? And it just seems that we need to have some, some rule somewhere that gets this stuff taken care of in a timely manner.
My wife is driving me crazy about it.
Is there any requirement for continuous construction?
You mean just if, if there's continuous permitting, permits received, if someone continues that over a five-year period, is that your...
No, no, I'm speaking of permits outstanding, but no activity on the site.
Yeah, well, as I said, it's up to two years from, from the issuance of the permit first time.
But Rick's right, there are codes that say if construction is stalled for more than five days...
Then it's, you, you also have inactivity that's due to construction. If there's no inactivity, the permit can be declared non-avoidant, start all over again. So there's, there are certain things that are, are, are in place, that, that, tools that do exist.
But not strong enough, it doesn't seem. I mean, we had a case down the street here that we had for... It was just because of the homeowner didn't care. I mean, anyway. Let's take a look at that. I think that might be worth convening. And Wayne, I'd, I'd love to come and sit down with you and just talk about that, and maybe try to get some teeth in that, because that's very important.
Sure.
Because it, it's the old broken window syndrome. You know, one house with a broken window leads the next person to think they can get away with a, a broken window. And then out of that line, then we have a slump. Not that we're going to have a slump, but it's just, it's a bad, a bad scene. So, okay, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second? On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wayne, I'll come. I'd certainly love to sit with you on that one.
You like to see?
Yeah, 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 yeah.